...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All in good order? Motion to approve the amendment. Do we need to make an amendment?
No.
Still move.
Not good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, carried. Approve the minutes.
Motion to approve as printed.
Second.
I'll second the minutes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, carried. General concern, public.
Harlan.
I just came up and there what Eric might have, or Bruce might have to say on how he visited out there.
Well...
My only reason for being here.
Just John Norman called Bruce and I with his dissatisfaction of some of those things. They did get out, when I talked to John, which would have probably been Thursday of last week, it leveled off in the field he farms to the south of One Ninetieth. And he still wasn't overly happy, but I mean, they did get the holes filled in and the divot covered and he was out disking to, you know, smooth it up. And then he claimed that he was going to rent a pull behind blade and try to smooth it up a little bit more. But, and I did drive out to check the intake situation that they fixed on the north side just this morning. And it looks like John's got his field, you know, he said, "I just gotta get it to where I can get over with the field calibrator and get it flat."
Right.
So, did get that accomplished. They did clean out the north ditch. There is an old, original intake there. They have that opened up and then the new intake, which me, and they're gonna, I wasn't gonna get out and crawl down in the ditch, but it looks, like I was telling Rick, they might have put a piece of soap covering over it just because the dirt's all disturbed, all rounded, and obviously to get a big amount of rain, don't want the, don't want the dirt going out.
Boat in the water.
But at least it's opened up. I mean, before it was covered with dirt. So, I mean, at least with some improvements. To your question about why the intakes are where they are, I'm not entirely sure either.
I don't know. I went out there Saturday and it was snowing so hard you couldn't hardly tell if the, if they had done, or got the rock in that little washout area along that fence row. But I did drive down along, um, coal morgans and looked down there and I couldn't tell did they do anything down towards the ditch.
There's a cat pushing dirt down there. It drove by.
Yep. In the front going on one day, I saw there was, I don't know what, just from the highway, there was somebody working down.
Yeah, thirty two eleven thing, so.
Yeah, this Dutch Nosterman talked about if they were gonna fill, there's a couple of holes that had developed and if they were gonna get that seeded, but that really doesn't affect, they can seed that, 'cause they, they have the grass strip in there, so. I guess I'm hopefully gonna get out there in the next day or so and look and see. I've tried calling John twice and either he's mad enough he don't wanna talk to me or he doesn't recognize my number, so.
Then that same day, uh, after they'd leveled off on the south side of the road, it looked like the cat was, it would be Dial's Field to the north, and now doing some, I imagine, leveling out there too, so. And I, I haven't heard from Dial. Have you heard from Dial?
I haven't. I just got a text the other day, but all it said was is their kings were there, so.
So, I mean, it's, at least it's, it's some improvement from what the, you know, problems were.
Wish we had more news that whether they were just about done, but...
Right. I agree with Bruce.
Well, what, I guess really worries me more than anything is, they've been doing a good job of running the mains, I think. Uh, the lateral connections, as I showed you a couple pictures, um, well, leave quite all to be desired, I think. And eventually they're going to be coming that new main up to where that piece is put under the highway. And if the engineering firm is going to allow the slotting work, in my opinion, of lateral connections, where they're gonna hook that main to that piece underneath the highway, it's not gonna last a hundred years.
How, when they're making their lateral connections, what are they doing that you're not agreeing with, I guess?
Well, using our own connection, I left a...
We got a couple pictures.
The, they had, uh, main had a T and, or a, yeah, a T on it so that they could hook right onto it.
Yeah.
The T sat like this, the incoming tile let, was down here on the bottom, you know, the big gap in the top. And yes, they put a piece of plastic over it and then that, uh...
Sackcrete?
That plastic, or that, uh, material over it and then covered it with cement and called it a quality job. Um, yeah, it'll last for a while, but is it gonna last a hundred years? I don't know. I just, to me, that's not quality work. The engineering firm was right there, they saw it and they say, "Oh, that's gonna be fine." Same way to those crossovers from the old main to the, to the new main. Uh, talked to Rick here a while back, I asked him about, what about instead of using that T and then put a piece of plywood over it, pile of cement, why don't you have them use a bind in T or even an elbow to run that water over, over to the new main? Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine. So, I called him here a while, not too long ago and asked him about if they had gotten that lined up. Well, he said they had been discussing it. Now they're talking that they're just gonna put the T in, let the water continue to run down the, the old main, uh, to where the last one is, which, I don't know, it's at least down in the middle of the section. And then, if I understand, water is just gonna run down the old tile line until it gets down there and then any overflow will just run through the crossovers. Well, we were trying to replace the old one, not make it a primary water carrier. Um, is he working for the landlord or is he working for the construction company? I mean, this is an easy way for them to do it, but it wasn't really what we were trying to accomplish by replacing that line.
I guess I was unaware of that. We'll have to visit with him.
Harlan does bring up a good point, because the original planning on that project was complete replacement of that old tile line.
Yeah, the crushing place.
But that just did not work, mainly because it was too wet. And, yeah, I tend to agree, if they are leaving the old one, there needs to be more connections across.
Well, they're gonna put the connections across, but, um, don't water just continue to flow in a straight line, preferably, doesn't it prefer to run in a straight line until there's, uh, restriction that'll make it go across on the crossovers and then T's?
Oh, you're afraid that if it's connected across from the old line, it actually will never go from the old one into the new one.
Right, I tell it just pour down to the end.
Well, I think the, the new line is lower, right? The new main is lower than the, so, I mean, it should run down there.
The fall should make it go to the, to the new main.
What, in which direction?
Yeah, it should. It should turn the corner and go down to the new main. I would think, you know.
If the T is tipped, uh...
The right, yeah, the T is tipped properly.
Yeah, and hopefully theoretically, most of the water is in the new one and very little in the old one.
Right.
But you still, means they left it, it does have to have access into the new tile.
Well, as the way it's set up now, all the laterals coming in on the west side are going to...
In the old main.
Really? We'll definitely have a visit with Rick and obviously they're not installing any tile as we speak, so...
And maybe something to consider this fall, if we have a dry summer, we can get back to the plan of replacing the crushing place, you know. That would be better, I think.
Yeah.
If, if we have a dry summer, this ground dries out a little bit. I think that would be better than you, then you don't have those issues with the crosspipes than you have...
And, and old tile.
And old, that old main to deal with. All right.
I would think that's definitely a good topic to visit about between now and then.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Maybe we should, you know, if we have a dry summer, get back to the original contract of crushing place.
I think that's fine, either way, just so it's a, quote, a good job when it's done.
Yeah.
Yep.
And overseen doesn't require what I, what most of us would consider a quality job.
Okay.
And we pay extra for having them on site most of the time to try and eliminate human air as much as possible and have a quality oversight that, I mean, give a quality job when it's done.
Uh-huh. Good point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harlan.
Thank you. Dean Wolt will not be here today. Not able to be here, but I gave you copies of your...
I seen that and I lost it. Whatever it is.
So, can we still go ahead and let this all be accepted?
Yeah.
Everybody's got a copy of it and ordered a report for...
Veterans Affairs. Looks like his expenses are running under the projection or the budget, aren't they?
Yeah, a bit.
On average.
The last two months have been pretty good.
Way under.
Well, through the winter they had heating assistance and...
That was a little over.
They're pretty well gone, so.
So, I think it bounced back up now.
January, you notice it bounced back up there a little bit.
What about you? Do you have any more scheduled blizzards for March or April? June, July?
No. Robin's got their tail dusted good now, so we're done.
All right.
Was that the third time?
It was twenty-two inches in Montana.
You keeping track? We should be good.
All right.
See, I'm guessing if there's a robin out there, he's headed back towards Iowa.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs quarter report for the quarter ended March thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
As printed.
As printed.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, carried.
This was the gentleman from last week?
Yep. There's a picture.
And they were in, last week, we told them to come back this week, so.
Put on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda.
I didn't, I think Ben said he didn't have to come back, didn't he?
Yeah.
He didn't have to come back.
He did, just needed the permit.
Right.
This is only like a half mile from my mother's house and I was up there this week planting corn and then I drove by and they had the pipeline in the ditch and I was a little concerned it was plenty high. So, I called Dave, Dave went and looked at it and told him to pull it out and put it deeper before they covered it, so.
Excellent.
So, I think that he's happy with it now and, so, Dave was on top of it.
Good.
So...
Bruce's favorite thing, the incorrect height of driveway pipes.
Well, you know, I just did a kinda quick drive by and I looked at it and thought, I lowered it about six inches and I thought...
And Dave went out and, you know, checked it.
Dave, I called Dave, I said, "Dave, it looks like they're getting ready to cover it up, you better go look at it."
Good.
He went and looked at it and told him no, they're gonna lower it, lower it.
Good deal.
Awesome.
Yep. Should be no problem, then.
Well, thanks for looking into that, Rick.
And it just happened, I was up that way last week and...
That's good.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the driveway and Vernon, Section fourteen, for Rod Nelson.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, carried. Go ahead and schedule.
How about the...
We're down to authorize the chairman to sign the employment, Employee Benefit System Third Party Administration Service.
Okay, a week or so ago, we did the well-marked side of it. Now, this is the partial self-funding side of it, um, that needs to be signed also. And there are three or four documents here that need to be signed. Okay, I'll make a motion to, um, have the chairman sign the Employee Benefit System Third Party Administrative Service Agreement and Partial Self-Funding for you all.
I will second.
Any more discussion on it?
Did anything change significantly from the past year? Is something that has to be signed every year?
Um, this is something that has to be signed every year and there was a change...
Or self-funding.
Or self-funding, well...
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I mean, we reduced our percentage, percentage to well-mark, yeah. So, our rate came in at four percent instead of at eight or whatever it was going to. Um, I think there was some change in the out-of-pocket amount.
Yes, it was a little higher.
Yeah.
So, we essentially putting a little bit more towards the premium, so the premium didn't go up from this.
Right.
Is that, just in a real, in a technical, but...
Yeah, that's, that's the nutshell.
And so that did change from a year ago, the discussion, so it's actually more towards the premium, what stayed more stable, a little bit more out of the self-funding.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And we're still in very good shape as far as partial self-funding goes. Um, I don't know if I gave you, there's a copy of it or not?
Yeah, I think you had, oh, not today, but we...
Yeah, yeah. I put a copy of my stuff here just to, um, we're still at over three hundred thousand, so.
You're comfortable with the amount, wasn't draining that account?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're fine. And I've taught numerous times to both Cindy and Denise on this to make sure, you know, that I'm not overthinking it and, you know, trying to use up too much and, oh, yeah.
That was Cindy's recommendation too.
Very much in favor of us using, yeah, count it up, so.
Great.
And we are using some of the partial self-funding also to fund, um, any of the wellness projects that are going on. And there's nothing major right now going on, but if something comes up like a luncheon or something, or where we go and learn, um, healthy things, then they'll...
Luncheon learns a lot, I think.
Good.
Yeah, they are. We're doing a good job.
Okay.
You have some stuff for design?
Yes. Do we devote?
We have, no, no.
No, no, no motion, no, that's not...
No.
Wait, there is a motion.
Motion.
Add a second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, carried.
Get it out. This is the VA report, it'll take an approved stamp that you have. He doesn't have a signature.
Hold on there.
What a night.
It's nice when you're having fun, huh? It's hard to believe we're already...
Just, I was gonna say, quarter of the way.
Yeah, I know it.
Around it.
We'll be starting a new fiscal year. Yep. Okay, we need just to sign the top page on each one of these.
Oh, you're signature, oh, you're a figure, right?
Yeah, mm-hmm. That's what we... You know, those needs like...
Sun's coming out, actually.
I was gonna say. Supposed to get halfway decent, Dave. Not very nice tomorrow.
Yeah, they moved the rain to tomorrow, yeah.
Don't need any more rain.
More rain. It was supposed to start getting warm, I mean, before it was supposed to be cold all week and now they're saying...
It's where it warm up a little bit.
Warm up. It always seems to happen, everybody gets so excited and wants to get flowers in the ground and then it freezes or it gets really cold or snows or something. Yeah, we planted our cabbage and broccoli and our beets are up.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
My asparagus was up until it froze off.
Oh.
Yeah.
Nice.
It just kinda went...
I had a neighbor that...
I don't know if it'll straighten back up or not, but it's not really droopy like...
Well, I could say something, but we're on camera, so I...
I had a neighbor, Jeff and Karen Burney must have been back by their garden and they said, "Do you realize how high your asparagus is?" I said, "No." Karen was, "Well, I was gonna cut it."
Yeah, I assumed that was...
So, I went on a Sunday night or Saturday night, yeah.
Well, I just planted it two years ago.
I went and cut it.
It's crazy to help people keep track of their asparagus.
Did you ask to cut it like in your yard?
Oh, yeah. They know where the patches are and they...
Perfect.
Well, we lived on one sixty-nine, we had, you know, I thought before they did the road instructions, I should have went and dug up and I, I did and I should have, because there was that nice purple thing.
Oh.
And I thought they, and we all gone anyway. I mean, there was a few of us who were beat each other out. Got it.
And, and they got different varieties, so some comes up early and some comes in a little later.
Yeah, definitely.
Means you're gone all the time and not...
Yeah.
I'm gonna be harvesting your asparagus next, you gotta be...
All right, if you come over and do it, I'll let you.
Okay. I like it.
Okay. Back to the agenda. Discussion and action on transfer of funds to the emergency managers' fund.
Okay, um, as of last week, um, Janet Brettlin came in and said, "Did you know your two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents in the hole?" That was after payroll and claims went out. And I said, "No, but I realized it was gonna happen." And, um, so that's why I put that on the agenda. I figured out what the salary would be through the end of June, um, and then we had some expenses here and there. I think we, we would need to move about twenty thousand if that is agreeable with you guys, yeah. That's just to cover payroll. Payroll alone is thirteen-five. And then, um, she had asked originally for a hundred and thirty-three, seven ninety-nine. The board gave her ninety-three, one, so that was forty thousand, six ninety-nine that you didn't give to her originally. But I'm thinking we could have another, um, legal fee, bill in from the attorney, that's usually around three thousand. You've still got electricity to pay whether somebody's there or not, cleaning, um, whatever other, there's phone bills, there's, um, just those necessities that go through. Um, you wouldn't wanna be short unless you want me to run it short and then come back and ask for more money later. We could do that, too.
No, no.
And those are just the fees that...
Twenty gonna be enough?
No.
I hope so, but it's, yeah, it's a good start, yeah. Because whatever you put in there stays there.
Yeah.
So, if nothing else, it would help for a cash balance for next year. But it wouldn't be a very huge balance, but...
That's all right.
Yeah.
So, you, twenty thousand is what you come up with?
That's what I would recommend.
Okay.
Otherwise, we won't have enough to, to meet next payroll, so. I'll make a motion to, um, transfer twenty thousand into the, um, emergency management fund.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, carried.
Thank you. We'll get that done.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, committee report.
Last Monday, the twenty-second, I had a building families meeting in Clarion on Monday afternoon. And that was my official...
Did they have someone, is Michelle gone now?
Oh, she's been gone. McKinley Bailey. If you know Doug Bailey, he's my daddy's son. He does a real nice, he's doing a real good job.
Huh. So, was he there, there before?
No.
It's a new...
He was new after Michelle, you know, it took, there's a little interim there and then he, over, I don't know, coming up on, not quite two years ago.
Wow.
She, she, when I started on there, she was there, I don't even know, a year. So, he's been there probably almost two. So, that was a, those are good meetings, things are running along, uh, pretty well. Uh, the only thing, not to go into huge detail, obviously some of the money that gets into building families, uh, does come from the state and the legislature wrapping up, there was a bill for whether they were gonna cut some of that funding or not, and I really don't, we didn't know at that time, and I still really don't know how that bill panned out. But, anyway, even without it, we went through the budget and it's still gonna run fine if they, if they did cut it a little bit, so. No, everything is going pretty well with the, with the building families. That was my only official meeting last week.
All right, the only official I had was the, um, dog shelter on, uh, Tuesday, six thirty. Uh, Dave was there with me and they talked a lot about, uh, we had the Humane Society that was there, joined us, and we talked a lot about, uh, what do you call it? T and R?
T and R.
Yeah, trap and release.
Yep.
Basically catching cats, repairing them, fixing them, letting them go.
Really?
In a twenty, twenty-four hour period, they set a trap at night, pick it up in the morning, whatever cat's in there, they fix it that day, take it back to its location and let it go. Um, that's, there's, I guess there's funding out there, some programs out there you can tap in for funding for this, so.
That and the city of Humboldt's gonna do, they're gonna be the guinea pigs to start with and see how many they get. And if it works out, well, then we can move on to different farms or...
Communities.
Run with cats here or there, we can go to other entities.
Yeah. But, um, then we're gonna work out a...
So, what do you mean, you mean like neuter them? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, that, okay, I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure that I wanted to neuter or, uh...
What are they calling, feral cats?
Feral cats. They're looking to catch feral cats.
Right, but they're not repopulating and...
And if, like they say, they'll know the difference between a wildcat and a tame cat, because tame cat usually purrs when you...
Right, yeah.
And so, when that purrs, you're gonna realize that they're gonna not instantly fix that one, 'cause it could be somebody's cat.
Somebody's cat.
So, they'll keep it for so many days and then either, you know, post it, we got this cat, come and get your cat, nobody comes and gets it, gets it, then they'll, then they'll take it after a week.
And they check it to see if it has the chip to the...
Yeah.
But those wild ones on the farm, they, they aren't friendly.
Yeah, but, I, I don't think it'll go to that extent.
No.
But they're mainly in the city of Humboldt and maybe some of these smaller communities will be interested in the program possibly.
Mm-hmm.
The last time she done it, uh, she trapped eighteen cats in one weekend.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, yeah. I can't believe that.
Some of them were kittens.
Yeah.
The whole litter, so.
It's an interesting theory.
But, it costs money.
I think we had eighteen people there, if I counted.
Yeah, at the meeting.
Couple of them slipped in afterwards, but it was a good meeting.
And the thought is, you know, once you get, at first you're gonna have a huge influx, but then if you get them, then you're not gonna be reproducing, so you won't have so many cats. And the reason for it is to, you know, protect the songbirds and stuff in town.
Well, I mean, it's the...
It does help the rabbit population, although that's not good, so.
Well, yeah, I don't wanna be devil's advocate, it's, it's a good step in the right direction, it's, it's a humane thing, but, uh, yeah, I don't know how bad we wanna support the feral cat population if it happens. I mean, it's...
And, uh, the city of Humboldt's taking, doing this to start with and, uh...
See how they turn out.
See how it goes. And, um, I'll see.
Interesting, it's interesting. I mean, it's-
And I- the city of Humboldt's taking doing this to start with and, uh-
See how they turn out.
See how it goes. And, um, I'll see.
Interesting, it's interesting.
Yeah. So, but it was nice to see the Humane Society and the dog shelter working together.
Good.
Cause it's same purpose, right? So, that's about all I had.
Tuesday, I had Edmo, uh, down in Fort Dodge, I guess it's Fort Dodge now, not Eagle Grove. Uh, everything's going good. Next month, we have our meeting instead of Fort Dodge, we gotta go to Amitsburg for the, one time a year, they have a- everybody goes and meets together, so. Thursday was in Webster City for CFR. Um, that's the brochure for the paper for the grand opening down there behind Tom Thumb. Is, uh, the seventeenth of May.
Yeah.
So you're all invited, um, things going good down there on, as far as the building project. They hopefully are gonna have, uh, the parking area completed by that night or that afternoon, I guess.
What time is that on the seventeenth?
I think it's-
Three to five.
Three to five, yes.
That's what I got.
Three to five, sir.
Yeah. Um, then on Friday, the twenty-sixth, I went over for- to Eldora for the juvenile detention board meeting. Um, all is well there. Humboldt County is- is, uh, our numbers are low, so that's a good thing for us. Then Saturday, I drove out to, uh, thirty-five during the snow and couldn't see a whole lot, so that was it.
Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, I had the, um, CSS quad meeting. All the, um, county supervisors were representative except for Cassouf County. Um, Dean was there and, uh, so they just talked about what programs are having and, um, I made the- I did email Bob to say I would like it to be more for what we, as our quad, or what it- what it pertains to, what we- what our needs are. And then he said he would- he responded, so. But it was- it was still was good to hear everything of the services again, and they're still working on the access center. So that's gonna be a big thing. It'll depend upon what happens with Webster County.
Where was that meeting at?
Fort Dodge.
Okay.
That it?
Oh, they did talk about a crisis prevention training, which I thought was really interesting. They're opening that up to any- anybody that would be interested in that, so I think that might be something, I'm gonna look into to see if we can get something started here in town. And throughout, not just in town, but throughout the whole county so that we can have different towns and that represented, too, when there's a problem.
Okay, Tuesday, I have Downey Animal Shelter at, uh, Tuesday night. Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, I had my just meeting in Fort Dodge. That's all official.
Okay.
Anything for us?
Um, okay, that's later, no, that's it.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we're early. Anybody object to moving on?
Well, I kinda do. Get up- go ahead, Dean, I'm just giving you a bedtime.
Oh, I'll turn over the recording.
Okay.
Well, thanks for having us. Um, we just wanted to come in. What we're looking for is, as you know, um, a few months ago, uh, I took over as jail administrator when I was promoted to chief deputy. And so we've been, uh, kinda working through some problems and some issues we've been having with jail, trying to get up to speed and trying to learn. I've never been a jailer before in my life, I don't know the first thing about it. And I'm picking up all these old ins and outs of it and, um, um, one of the things I discovered is our policy and procedure manual has been updated since two thousand and eight. Um, and obviously, there's always changes and things that are coming down and new restrictions and- and things like that. So, to be completely honest with you, um, you know, it's been a little bit overwhelming. Um, so, um, with one of the promotions that also came, Roger Bennett was promoted to sergeant, so he and I kinda got together and we decided to try to form kind of a two-headed monster type thing. Where between the two of us, we can try to, um, stay on top of things and try to get things, you know, kinda organized and kinda, you know, figured out, I guess, to a certain degree. Um, so one of the things that we kinda did some brainstorming on is, um, I reached out to, first of all, I wanna introduce this, Steve, his nickname is Wally Elephers. He's the jail administrator in Webster County. Um, so I kinda reached out to Wally and, um, just trying to look for some pointers and things like that. Um, and so consulting with Dean, one of the ideas we kinda came up with was maybe approaching you guys to see if it would be possible, um, about hiring Wally as like a con- like a subcontractor, I guess, for a few months. What we're kinda looking for is some fresh eyes. Somebody to come in, kinda tell us what we're lacking, kinda tell us what we do right, what we can do better of. Um, and to kinda maybe, um, kinda take Roger and myself under his wing a little bit, to kinda help educate us on what we should be doing, what things, um, we need to be looking at and kinda get on top of things so that we can kinda get on a li- on a level playing field here. Uh, we've had some turnover here in the last month or so. I think we're down about three jailers right now. Um, and obviously, just like with all the other employers around the community, you know, we're struggling trying to find good applicants, people that obviously wanna work nights, weekends and holidays, that's tough. Um, just, you know, it's a different- it's a different animal. I guess a lot of people don't understand what it's like trying to staff, um, you know, a facility twenty-four-seven and, you know, nobody wants to work every weekend and nobody wants to work, you know. We all know the issues that go along with it. So, I guess we're just looking for, um, trying to get up to speed here a little bit and just try to get some things figured out to make sure we're-
Let's put the sign on the door if we do.
Sorry, I do want-
Thank you.
So, I guess that's kinda what we're looking at, um, and I guess we asked Wally to come here today and maybe he could kind of, you know, he's kinda thought of some things that he thinks he could help us out with. Um, he would still maintain his full-time employment in Webster County, this would be a side gig for him, so this isn't anything that's gonna impede upon that. Uh, I guess what we're kind of envisioning is, you know, maybe twenty hours a week or so, he could come up for about three months, is kinda what we're tentatively thinking. Um, he'd wanna come up on some evenings and on the weekends and stuff, and maybe, um, he can explain more of this here in a second, kind of explain, uh, just wanna observe for a few days, kinda see how we do things. Cause obviously, we're a much different facility than what they are down there. They just got so many more inmates, um, and obviously, there's some things that they do down there that just isn't gonna pertain to us up here. Um, but then to, like I said, kinda, uh, there's a lot of things I- I know we wanna change with as far as handling our money of the inmates. Wally says they've already made these changes in Webster County as far as issuing debit cards to inmates when they get out. So we have more of a paper trail. We're still doing, as Peggy knows, we still do everything on with cash. And I wanna get away from that as much as we can. Um, it just, you know, if we can get a paper trail as far as writing checks and issuing debit cards, so we have a paper trail and an account for everybody's- their money, the inmates, so we don't have issues in that regard. Um, so, yeah, there's just, I mean, a lot of things, and every time I talk to Wally, he comes up with a few more things, and I'm, "I haven't even thought about that yet," so. So, I guess I'll just let Wally talk here for a little bit if you just wanna start up.
Thanks for having me, guys.
Thanks for coming up.
Um, like I said, might give you a little background, I'm in my thirty-third year in corrections. So I, you never see it all, cause every time the door opens, something new happens or something new walks in. But I started out as a part-time jailer in Webster County, worked for Department of Corrections for about thirteen, fourteen years. Um, came back when Brian Michelson was sheriff. He, "Please come and run my jail, cause I don't know anything." These guys are wrote down, they're not supposed to know one thing about the jail, unfortunately. Sheriff, he gets pinned with the task and the biggest liability in your county is your jail. And trust me, I've been sued and I'm in a lawsuit right now, but, I mean, that's unfortunately is gonna happen. And that's what's nice about the policies. If you write 'em good, it just, and don't pin somebody down to doing something, don't make it, you know, so specific that, you know, the policy's gonna be about the paragraph law. It's the procedures. And that's what you have to do. You have to go, like I said, I would work with the staff and just see how they do it and then write the procedures to their way of doing things. And that's when I took over for the sheriff down there and I'd say, it took me about four and five months to sit down and, you know, I'd be writing a policy, do the procedures, and I'd call them up, say, "Hey, how do you do this?" And as long as it worked in the realm between all the different agencies, everybody's gonna sum to tell you, you know, uh, chapter fifty of the Iowa code or Delbert Longley, which is a pretty good guy, which is a state jail inspector. And, you know, he's within a phone call away. And Delbert will tell you, he's not there to burn you up, he's there to just keep you from getting burned out. And that's the biggest thing on policies is, you know, if you write 'em good, that attorney, when they decide to sue you, they're going, "Well, maybe we're just gonna go for that little bit instead of that large amount," you know? Because they're, like I said, unfortunately, it happens.
So what are- what you would be doing here would be like, basically, like copying some of the stuff they have down there? Would you actually be making new policies for Humboldt County specifically?
Yeah, it's gonna be specific. I mean, I could, you know, you at- sometimes you may have one jailer working. I have five, so there's-
Yeah, you're just gonna- you're gonna have to tweak it for our county.
Well, yeah, and it's like I said, there's just certain things that you have to write to because of chapter fifty of the Iowa code or the ADA, which is, you know, you just have to write those things. You know, you know as a board, there's things you just have to do, no matter how much the citizens get upset about it, but you have to do those things. And that's where chapter fifty falls into play. You're just, you're gonna go in and say, you know, "You will do this, so that's what we're gonna write that policy." But then I'll go and say, "How do you do that?" You know, I know how I would do it, but how do you do it? There's no sense to, you know, go that far. And then at the end, write a, and I should've brought a copy with me, I have a comprehensive policy or, uh, training manual from, turn the door knob walk through, maybe not quite that good, but- but close, you know? I'm gonna, and that's gonna help these guys kinda hire those new staff.
That'd be very desirable, too.
Yeah, that new staff's gonna read that and, you know, and that way, uh, if, say I get a new staff and we'll do, like, we're booking somebody in, they're gonna be over there reading that as my other staffer booking men. And then they're gonna go, "Okay, I see that and I see that." And, and three o'clock in the morning, we love them phone calls, don't we, guys?
Mm-hmm.
At least they can read through there and say, "Oh, that's how you do that," instead of calling up and- and asking those questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, you know, like I explained a little bit ago, and as he said, you know, I- I've never been a jailer before in my life and running a jail and knowing all the ins and outs of, you know, PRIA, which stands for the Prison Ri- uh, Prison Rape Elimination Act. There's so many different facets to that, that, you know, trying to get up to speed on all that, that I've never been trained on. And I'm, my background was working the road and working the street and doing investigations and, um, you know, so it's just, we're looking for, trying to get up to speed on things. I know we've kinda fallen behind and- and it's just, um, kinda looking for somebody that's got the- the knowledge and the background that Wally does to kinda help us through, get us over the hump, get us up on an even playing field here where we can, you know, kinda throw us up in the air and let us fly away at some point when, uh, when it feels like he's got us trained. And to come up with these policies and the training policies for the new jailers so that everybody knows where they're at, um, when they start. And we can feel confident when the first shift that they start working by themselves, that they know what they're doing. And if they don't, they can go grab a book and they can pull down and flip to the right page and they can read and see exactly if they're not quite sure of something, they know right where they're- what they should be doing. So I guess kinda what Dean and I discussed is one of our full-time jailers resigned a couple of weeks ago and we haven't filled her position yet. Her plan is not to fill that position. If- if you guys will allow us to hire Wally to try to help offset some of the, um, costs that it would cost him to come up here. Um, we're- May has been a really tough month for us, trying to get the schedule filled with having, you know, being short. We have some people that have, uh, we have one- one of our jailers has a graduation coming up, so she can't work. And so we've got some dispatchers that have agreed to come in and fill some hours in for us where they could to try to fill in, to get us over the hump here until we can get some new staff hired. Um, so actually, you know, from our perspective, it's really, you know, it's not good timing for us to be so short, but in a weird way, if this works out with us and Wally, it's a good opportunity because if we're gonna get some new staff on and we can get them trained right from the beginning and hopefully have someone come in and, um, you know, have things squared away right from the very beginning so that we don't have issues that we're trying to correct later on down the road.
So there won't be a conflict between Webster County and up here?
No, this is-
They all have our phone numbers down there, so I don't wanna get dinkwalt calling and screaming that we're stealing the jailer.
They'll get their forty-five, fifty-plus hours. So, like I said, I- they're never- they're never short. I'm still trying to figure out why I did this salary thing to begin with.
You sure had to pay off.
And we're in the same position, too. I mean, we- by no means do we wanna do anything that we're gonna make Webster County mad. This is-
Right.
This is on the side for him, but he's, you know, like he said, he's talking twenty hours a week or so. He can come up and just kind of observe in the evenings, on the weekends and stuff and get us going, so.
And then everything will go through them before it gets blessed. And like I said, then we'll send it to the sheriff and the sheriff can sign off on all the policies, so.
So basically, we're gonna end up with a new handbook type thing for your employees down there and have a s- a reference manual for training, like it's- I think it's a great idea.
And, and it's just, it's so many other, I mean, the money thing. God, that's just, the minute I took over and I see that we're still divvying out cash back and forth and I just, that scares me.
Yeah.
It just scares me that there's no paper trail, that it's just, and they're, and I know one of the things I talked with Wally, he said what they do down there is with debit cards, that they get machines and he knows he's got contacts with that. You know, we can- we can be swiping and giving inmates back debit cards and then we can be writing checks back to the treasurer's office to compensate for commissary and phone cards. And so we have an absolute paper trail of what went where and what was dispersed out per- for each inmate. So I guess, you know, just a fresh set of eyes. That's really what I'm looking for, try to tighten things up a little bit and more checks and balances and accountability for everything is what I'm really looking for.
And it sounds like it won't be too hard on your budget.
Shouldn't be.
So you mentioned, speaking of budget, that you were not gonna hire additional staff yet. But when Wally gets all this up to speed to everyone's liking, which is a great idea, then you're probably looking to have to hire additional.
Or replace.
Replace.
As you probably saw, we have an ad in the paper for two part-timers right now. We have- we wanna hold off with filling the full-time position until Wally's done. And then we'd like to fill that full-time position probably later this summer. Is kinda what we're thinking. We're just trying to hold off with the benefits thing to help offset some of the costs.
That makes sense.
Bring Wally in, that's kinda what we're thinking now. We gotta get some part-timers, we just don't have enough people now to fill the hours that we have. Um, and to be honest with you, I- I may end up having to sit back there a while and I don't know the first thing about it. I've never dispersed a medication before in my life, and so-
So you said like twenty hours a week or twenty hours every mon- uh, what was-
Usually, it's about twenty hours, I'm sure. It'll be sort of more than that. We'll just set a, you know, whatever the sheriff would like, four or five months.
What would your timeframe be? Would it be a month? Would it be two months? Just depends on how things come together, then?
I- I guess in my mind, I'm thinking three. I'm thinking three months, it's gonna take that long just to, and, you know, maybe we could cut it a little bit short, maybe it ended up happening to be a little bit longer than that, but I guess in my mind, I'm looking at that three-month timeframe.
Okay.
Will you be able to, um, sustain, you know, the jail that long without hiring somebody for three months?
Yeah, if we could- if we can get a couple of these part-timers hired, that'll get us, that'll help out a lot if we can get them going maybe by the first of June.
Okay.
And then, you know, if we're talking August or so before we get the full-timer hired, that, I mean, we can get by with, if we can get a couple of part-timers hired the next month or so, we should be okay.
I might even take a shift or two.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah.
So Cory, did you end up being the jail administrator?
Yes, that's all I hear.
It's a tough job, I- I personally, nobody likes- nobody likes a jail, you never hear about the jail unless something goes wrong, you know? It's- it's the biggest expenditure as far as any, you know, in the county, it's like I said, no, everybody just kinda wants to stay away. But like I said, if it's run right, I- and these guys are, you know, on top of it, so I think they're gonna do wonderful, but they just need the tools to do it.
Yeah, that's probably something that could've, that maybe should've even been done previously.
Yeah.
But-
To be completely honest, but again, you're, I- I feel, I know what's right and wrong, I know what makes sense and what passes the smell factor, but sometimes when it just comes with all these little, you know, like he talked about, quote, chapter fifty of the Iowa code, you know, fire drills requires, the fire drills need to be conducted every so often. These are all things I didn't know anything about. So I'm trying to get learning myself and get up to speed. And so I think if we can get the foundation underneath us, you know, at some point, we'll be fine. It's just, like I said, coming into it, having never been a jailer before, the personnel part of it, I think I'm okay with, it's just all the little ins and outs of running a jail that I'm just not familiar with.
Well, why wouldn't you call on Wally's expertise of thirty-plus years in the system? You know, you aren't gonna rewrite anything, you're just gonna adapt it to your system.
You know, the wheel's there.
Yeah.
We're just putting-
And he's gonna help you get it to where you need to be with your system, so.
How many people do you house, or can house, let's put it that way?
The jail, uh, inspector says we can hold sixteen, but fourteen is comfortable. Sixteen's kinda packing it in there.
I house seventy-seven, but, uh, sixty, sixty-five is as good as all houses.
We don't wanna be that big.
Yeah, I would say.
I wish you were and I'd just bring you all my-
Well, I think that's a great idea.
I do, too.
Yeah.
I would make that motion to allow them to hire Steve Wally. I don't know how you want it classified.
You know, in my business, I've been called just-
I'll leave it to Peggy then to put your name.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Gary.
I'm just curious, how many people do you average, do you think, in the jail?
I- right now- I, right now, we are very lucky because we are short on staff, so right now, I just brought one up twenty minutes before I came up here, so right now we're at zero, which has been pretty unusual for us. Normally, I would say on average, we're like, four to six, something like that, is typically where we're sitting.
So what is it, you're not, it's not like you're at the fourteen oh?
No.
Last fall during the winter, we were right around ten.
Yeah, we had ten for quite a while last, last fall, but then, I would say on average, we're right around that four to six range is typically where we're.
Does it vary quite a bit in length of time that their individual's gonna be there? I mean, you just.
Depends on the charges, you know?
We, we had one female in a year ago, she was in for just about a full year waiting for her case to be disclosed, so, that's pretty unusual, that doesn't happen a lot, but, you know, just kinda like Wally said, it just depends on the seriousness of the charge and the crime, and how fast the defense attorney and the prosecution can work through the case.
You can usually tell how many they have, what, you're at Hy-Vee, about five, five-fifteen when they come for the meal.
Yeah. He's got a full hour and they go.
They're taking a couple trips back and forth, and you know?
Yeah.
Well, good luck with that. Sounds like it's gonna work.
If you ever have any questions, like I said, I'm nine-one-one, I'm in the book.
Don't think we probably wanna be calling nine-one-one to get a hold of you, Wally.
It's just the dispatchers.
Yeah.
But no, if you ever have any questions, you know, I have Dean, and I'll be more than happy to come up and explain.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Okay, and moving on, Ben, you're up.
Ben, we've been here waiting for ya.
Were you?
You're on, you're on the kid patrol area.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Somebody was exercising.
Yeah, I know.
That'd be nice.
Those days are gone.
Yeah.
This is either for you or something, because I.
Or Ken.
We have the agenda, we got.
I think it might be this one, you like, can't do it.
Approved voucher number one for, uh, project FM dash CO forty-six, bearing seventy-one. This is P sixty-six north of Hardy. We've got roughly one mile left of milling to do before they move over to the Bowdoin Road, and we are back paving again today, and we just passed a half-mile here about seven this morning, so. We're moving again.
Did they break down or something?
Yeah, we started paving on, uh, we started paving on Wednesday, and the bearing on the auger on the paving machine was going out. It wasn't out yet, but basically they shut themselves down before the thing went out.
And they had all these piles of concrete.
Concrete.
I thought I was wondering about it a while.
Yeah, I mean, at the beginning of the morning, there's roughly forty thousand dollars worth of concrete on the road, 'cause they've got thirty trucks, thirty-five trucks that they're running with, it's such a long haul, so they, they chose to basically shut themselves down rather than break down and have all them trucks on the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I kinda wondered about that.
Um, and then Thursday, obviously with the rain.
Cold weather.
We shut down on Thursday, and then, uh, Friday they didn't run basically because cold weather that they're home for over the weekend. Um, I think what it is, is basically you gotta hold the temperature for the first forty-eight hours, it's gotta be above forty or forty-five, I'm not sure what it's, um, and obviously Saturday they were talking temperatures in the upper twenties, so.
All right, I'll make a motion for a pay voucher number one to the Nats for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and eighty-eight cents.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry.
And you said they're just about done with the milling, and then they'll move that?
And then they'll move the milling machine over to the Bowdoin Road.
And they're gonna go north towards Bowd?
I'm not sure which direction.
Oh, yeah, that's what I wondered. I have to go that way, so I was just wondering.
Well, make sure you don't create some kind of issue.
It'll be prob, my guess is it'll be tomorrow if they're moving the machine, with them having about a mile, mile and a half left to do, that's a full day.
Yeah.
So milling, and then by the time you load up all of the equipment, get moved, it'll be tomorrow.
I'm sure they're working the bogs out, you know, that bearing I'm sure was looked at, well, how do you tell if a bearing unless it's really sloppy, so.
It sits all winter.
Sits all winter is right.
And they upgraded their GPS equipment, and they've been having issues with that, so, that's, or their toll station equipment, but they're serving the payments, so.
Hmm.
They've been fighting that too.
And then that white stuff, when they got back to Humboldt County, they just look at you like, seriously?
Well, it wouldn't be paving if we didn't have it on, over here, so, but no, they're, they're good through, and then, I guess, I didn't have to tell them not to pave it on Friday, they looked at the forecast and chose not to.
Okay, good.
Nice to meet you, think about, think ahead.
Paving there east of Livermore, west of Livermore is nice and smooth?
Yes.
Very nice.
Yeah, that patch ride's really nice.
That's a good thing, because it, there again, it was mostly weather-related.
And I haven't spoken to that contractor since the, the project has gotten completed. Uh, I didn't run another pay voucher for them, 'cause I figure I need to sit down and talk to him. Um, if I pay him for the patch, all we've got left is the retainage, and right now we're sitting on twenty-five working days that they've rolled past, add a thousand dollars a day if we're allowed to charge them, but DOT's kind of gotten with AGC already and said, basically give them a pass because of the weather that we had last year, but, um, we'll, we'll figure something out when I sit down with the contractor and I'll bring it to you.
Okay.
We got our, other motor patrol back, I met, I think one of us looked like Humboldt's riding.
We did, uh, Mike says that it's still smoking, and Dan is supposed to be coming up to take a look at it.
How far are we from getting that thing?
Uh, right now, the only bill that I've paid for it so far is, is about a ten thousand dollar bill, but I figure the one that's coming or in the mail is probably twenty-five.
But isn't that one going down the road, or is that one being moved over to the other side?
It's getting switched to a, a winter.
Winter machine.
So, uh, the hours won't be quite as extreme on it, uh, the motor patrols did get bumped back to the end of July, um, something with caterpillar and hovering.
So is it ahead or something? I just, I never noticed it when I met him, I met him down by the airport, rode down there.
Uh, to be honest, I haven't seen it, uh, I, I know he talked to him on Thursday, late Thursday, and they said that the machine was in the wash bay, which means that it's getting cleaned up, and he went down first thing Friday to pick it up, and he said it ran all right, but he said it was smoking, he doesn't know if it's an injector or not.
I don't.
But yeah, that was about as not good news as far as equipment, so.
As I say, you'll have that?
Yeah.
This equipment.
Yeah.
What, uh, I know that this has been the toughest spring any of us have ever seen on secondary roads. Where is everybody at with, you know, all of the fixing that needs to be done yet? What's your thought process on that?
Right now, we got, uh, uh, all but about a day, day and a half left of FEMA cleanup. Uh, I think by the end of the day on Tuesday, we should be done cleaning up all the stalks. We have rock that still needs to be hauled for Murray Bridge, and the rock cleaned up out of the ditch at Murray, and the same thing on Borman or Tombstone, whichever one we wanna call it. Uh, those two stretches of roads still need FEMA work done to them, and then we've got a couple of other roads that need a little bit more rock hauled to them, and then FEMA's done. Uh, we've got all of our blades tacked on the roads right now, trying to shape up the frost boils that we've got, and hauling spot rock to them where we can, basically, once we get done with FEMA, we'll try and switch full force to hauling rock.
And I know there are some of those spots that are so bad, and I think you might, I hope I'm not making it up, that you were attempting to get some rock in an area and almost got the truck stuck.
We have multiple places, uh, we've, we've hauled loads of rock on gravel, the problem is, once you get two or three trucks hauling on the same road, you get the road to pumping on ya, uh, and you just can't do any good. The water table's still so high on the, on the roads right now that we seem to be doing more damage than good, and we're trying to haul.
Obviously, the traveling, general public, some, you know, everyone's thought process is a little different. Some people are seeing it as, they just, like you said, it's the water table, it's whatever the perfect storm conditions were from last fall to this spring, 'cause nobody, I've talked to a guy that's well into his seventies and has generally lived in the same place most of those years, he says, I've never seen, seen it this bad. So I mean, historically, it is as bad as we've seen it, and.
It's, it's the worst that I've seen it, I guess, and.
And you're not even seven years old yet.
No. My time is considerably shorter than, than seventy years in one location, but.
It is just rough, and, you know, I feel for the people that have to travel on these roads, and, uh, you know, they're, they're just wondering, of course, you know, how soon can they get them addressed, and can they get them fixed?
We're, we're trying to address them right now, like I said, we've got every blade out, uh, we're, we're trying to run the roads and shape the roads up, um, when it's fit enough that we can haul rock on them to improve the road and actually get the good limestone base that everybody's used to driving on, uh, we'll have, we'll have it, but, you know, I mean, we're, we're at that point right now where the roads are soft with, with us hauling rock, trying, trying to haul rock and pumping them, and, uh, all of the farm implements that have to get out to their fields, you know, it doesn't matter what the road condition is.
They're gonna go.
They gotta go, you know, and, and we understand that, and we're trying to work around that. Uh, we blade a road and ten minutes later, when we're coming back to blade it the opposite direction, if there's been enough truck around it, you can't even tell we were there.
I got a question for you. You come up along for your road?
I didn't today.
And I went down and looked at that, it's, it's nasty, it almost looks like the road is actually sliding down the hill.
Yeah, on the northern.
I mean, yeah, yeah, on the north side of that hill. You come over the hill, and it, it just turned to mush, and it's actually starting to move down the hill, the road is.
I said something to the blade operator.
I don't know what he can do about it.
I don't know either.
I mean, the only I can say that you out there in the pack will dig it all up and fill it full of rock.
Right.
'Cause it's, it's just, it's just actually, the road is sliding down the hill.
That's how bad these conditions are, isn't it?
Is it because the frost was so deep, or what's?
The frost was so deep, basically, and then we had.
It's still kinda heated?
We've had a wet spring.
Wet spring, wet fall.
Wet fall.
Wet fall and heavy equipment.
Well, the good news is, being moved, 'cause if we did, it would tear the fell.
And, you know, the folks out there see the, if they're on the road or near the road where there is one of these large feed trucks or something that's going down their road, and they understand that, you know, and they're, again, they have to get down there, and they know that, they wish they didn't, you know, because it's just a, it's a rough deal, and it, I guess the thing is that you're after it, you know, we'd all like the conditions to improve as soon as later.
Yeah.
You know, the drying.
Right.
And the firming, and, you know, you're not sitting in the weeds waiting, you're, you're doing what you can do.
No, yeah, all, I mean, like I said, all of our guys are working, doing something right now, it's not sitting around. Like I said, we've got one shop that's putting up detour signs, uh, planning on the mill moving over to the Bowdoin Road tomorrow, we've gotta get all those advanced detour signs up. Um, we've got another shop that's hauling rock to the intersections that paving is coming down, the blades are all out moving, and Humboldt is the last shop that's got a day left of, of cornstalks, so.
On a different note, and there again, weather-dependent indoor permitting, would you say that milling will be most, if not all of this week on the Bowdoin Road?
It'll be all of this week and a good portion of next week.
The milling?
Yeah.
So the paving will be?
Two weeks.
Two weeks on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, right now, we've got, Hardy North is a six-and-a-half mile stretch, we got a half a mile done right now, good days anywhere between a mile, mile and a half, we haven't seen that yet.
No.
This week's calling for a chance of rain Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday.
You're at it for, kinda staying real good.
So if we get two days of rain this week, we get three days of paving, that means we still have three miles left to do on the Hardy stretch.
Following week, so, just as an idea, because there again, like you said, with farming and that, that, it's all, everything out north is impacted by the way.
It might catch beans.
Possibly.
It, it might possibly catch beans, a lot of the corn is already in the ground.
Right.
But, so probably with even fairly decent weather and missing some of the rain, you wouldn't see the paving start on that Bowdoin Road stretch probably for almost two weeks? Two weeks from today, uh.
Give or take, I mean, you know, there again, it's all weather-dependent.
You gotta move, strip equipment, get over there.
Okay.
Uh, you'd be two weeks.
Well, get your, get your ba, big bag of pixie dust and go sprinkle it wherever you gotta sprinkle to help.
Yeah.
I guess all we can do is keep our fingers crossed.
It's like we can, yeah, we gotta drive careful, drive safe, I know a couple farmers have talked, and, you know, they've sunk in the same frost boils that we've stuck motor graders in, you know, you're talking same weight of the equipment, basically the same span, uh, unless you're pulling an implement behind you, and then that's a narrower wheel base as opposed to the tractor that you're on.
You need to caution everybody to be careful on the gravel road, watch the equipment.
Anything else?
Keep up the good work, slugging away.
Thanks, Ben.
Usual complaint over on Washington, on this house is running up and down there, tearing the road up, there ain't nothing you can do about it.
Gentlemen, just stop Highway three.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I get scolded 'cause we hauled corn stalks, and somebody else burned them, I said, but, we didn't burn them, and we didn't burn any poles up, we didn't catch anybody's field on fire, so we hauled them and we got them done, and they're out of there, that's what I'm assuming. While it was just perfect, you could've burned them, we shouldn't have had to haul them all, and I was, shoulda, coulda.
For us?
Mm-hmm.
For us, liability.
I know it is, that's what I said, and if we catch a pole on fire, your farm burns the barn down?
We used to do it, and I think it was, um, the last person that I know of was Don White, burned up a power pole, it's been seventeen, eighteen years ago, it might even been before I was here. Uh, we were, you know, burning ditch this time of year, getting rid of cornstalks, dead grass, whatever, and get a whole half-mile lit up, and by the time you get back to the other end.
Get a full obstacle.
And those things with the crease, so, once they start, they go, they get hot in a hurry, so I just, I said, that's liability, safest, that's what happens.
Well, and, and not only that, uh, FEMA is paying for this cleanup, and they tend to turn their nose at you burning it in place, uh, they'd much rather like the sound of compost.
Well.
Yeah.
Understandable, coming from them, but, yeah, and there again, it is cost shared, FEMA.
Oh, oh, yeah, we, we could've done it, uh, a lot faster, burning it in the road ditch, it's just a higher liability, I don't know that Scott Curran would be too excited about us starting to light ditches on fire, and I don't know that FEMA would be too excited about it either.
Right.
You gotta look at the overall.
Did you get that letter or email on, from FEMA on training?[1743.82] Did you get that letter or email on, from FEMA on training?
Yes, I did, uh, I had it going back, but if we were paving, I didn't know if I'd be able to travel to wherever it was at. And I guess they sent an email back saying that they'd encourage me to try and find a computer monitor or something to log into the training. All the training is, is here's how you fill out the paperwork.
Yeah.
Which we just did, literally like three months ago, so...
So we can do it like a webinar type thing?
I think so, yeah, I, I all left a message on the gals phone, I haven't been back from it yet.
Thank you, well, it's fun to hear, with, with a more fire station?
Yeah, with more.
That was, that was a month away or so.
Yeah, so there was one in Ford Dodge this week, I think. But the way they made it sound is that I log in from the terminal here, from my computer, but...
I think that would be more than adequate, given the discussion.
Especially means you just did it?
Well, that's just it, we, we just... I'm assuming we did the paperwork right since this is a chat.
I think that was fair assumption.
Yeah.
Hope so.
Good, alrighty.
Alright?
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else come before the board?
Peggy, we're gonna ask, or did we wanna throw that out, when, uh, we talked about on Friday with CFR?
Oh, yeah, mhm. Um, when we were doing budgeting, there were several numbers, we were... When we were doing budgeting, there were several numbers that were thrown out there for CFR, a lot of it had to do with the building project. And how much we'd have to pay each year to that. And, um, I had a request from Shelley with CFR, asking us if the seventy-two hundred that they'd requested for funding, um, had been approved or not for next year. They're putting their budget together, they need to know. Um, I looked and I don't see it in there, and I don't know if it's something we missed when we were discussing, or if we don't wanna give them the money. And so that's why I'm talking to you to see what's your thoughts on it. And we certainly can, we can do, you know, we've got a budget amendment, we'll have to do one coming up in May, so we could, you know, allocate that to the right spot. But I didn't have it in the amount that I had allocated for, the only thing I had to... Yeah, so if it's your understanding that we did wanna pay them in addition, the seventy-two hundred as well as the building fund, um, I can certainly make that happen, but...
Well, I, that's the way I thought I remembered it, but I don't re- I didn't wanna be the, I just wanted to make sure that we ran it by the rest of the board because...
I just didn't wanna be the only one today.
Yeah, especially when I'm on the board.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be the one that's gonna get asked, "Are, are you doing it?" Well, right now, no, but...
Well, I'll probably have on next week's agenda for you, um, setting a dating time for a budget amendment. And we'll get this in on that budget amendment as well as anybody else.
Was there, with that twenty thousand that we did for E M A, is that, will we have to amend that for that, or so that'll be partial?
It'll take it out of our cash balance. Okay, that's it.
Anything else?
Well, just wanna run this by you, it means I'm looking on this. Notice in the paper for weed control, I was gonna ask Peggy this anyway, so it means we're all here. Uh, and going back from, Peggy went back in the archive, we have a, a snippet put together that, notice, that will cover the fact that we are saying that milestone is used for official control. And there's grazing restriction on it, and that was a big emphasis, emphasis at the Weed Commissioners Conference. So we've got that pretty well put together. I don't know if, you know, all these codes, things like Wally was talking about and going through J O codes and that, are we required to put a noxious weed notification published? Which we, I don't think it's been for, how long, where did you have to go back to find that?
Yeah, I had to go back quite a ways.
So it hasn't been common practice over the past several years that that's even been published, but if that's the case, maybe we can, and Peggy and I have a lot of examples. We should probably put that in there along with the milestone one that we pretty well, I think, got that covered. It's just, it is, uh, basically saying that by law, landowners are required to control noxious weeds. And that's what it says in a nutshell, but it can be about this long, so...
So if they don't do it, does that mean that the county comes and takes care of it and they charge the, um, landowner?
Bingo.
Okay, that's the only way you're getting, yeah.
Yep. And we really haven't had much of an issue, we've had more of an issue with the landowner saying, "Why isn't the county controlling the weeds in the right of way?" I think we've got that fairly well addressed, so, I'm just saying, is it, is it actually a requirement, or is it just a suggestion?
Well, that's what got this whole, you guys are familiar with base camp through I S A C and email sending, somebody else asked the question about, um, what are we required to do for yearly notice for weed commissioner? So all these notices have been coming in from other counties, and so that makes me believe that it is required. I guess I haven't read through them to see if they quote a code section or not, but...
Oh, yeah, they do.
Other counties wouldn't be doing it if they didn't have to.
So it's probably a good idea that we do it.
This is probably...
And we used to, we used to all the time.
So I...
But that's been when we had a person who was dedicated as a weed commissioner and...
We give you that title.
Yes, thank you very much, I appreciate that. The pay is phenomenal. So it's probably... Probably gonna be something that looks similar to this, it's pretty well cut and dried, it is, it is a code, it is, uh, Iowa Code, uh, Chapter three seventeen. I mean, it's been there for ever, like all these codes.
Perfect.
So, just, uh, Peggy and I are putting the notice together, saying we've got the one, I think, fairly well covered. We'll go through this, and I think this one's, covers it pretty good, but I'll double check. Something that we, you know, we've got a couple of weeks, it's not immediate, we're not doing any spraying right away, but we kinda shooting for mid-May, so, just so it's in there well ahead of spraying time.
Perfect.
So that's what we're working on, I think we'll get that here in the next week or so.
I did have something else, I just remembered, Renee Van Borken sent a letter, her and I have been talking back and forth probably the last six months about, um, employee handbook. And we're required to meet once a year to, to all the offices and everybody's on the committee to go over it and just update it. She's suggesting that, um, since the current handbook was last updated in two thousand fourteen, and we did that with the help of Stu Cochran. Um, he helped us update a lot of the information in there. But because of the Iowa collective bargaining law changes, um, she thinks we need to do a major revamp again. She wants to compare the, our handbook to the union contracts, and I know there's a lot of differences between them all. And it makes it hard when you have an employee, um, call and say, you know, "What is my benefit for this?" And it's like, okay, are you in this union, or this union, or this union, or are you on personnel policy? And they all have slight little differences. And so she would do that, um, so she's proposing to help with that process, um, for cost. And that letter came in, that's her proposal. I don't know if you're interested in it or not, I told her I would give it to you, and if you are, I can put it on next week's agenda for some action.
Now, who would it be, what is she?
Renee is our H R person, since we don't have a H R in-house. She's someone we've used for years in Europe, she's, um, I wanna say Des Moines, but I don't think that's...
Yeah, Des Moines or Aikene.
Is it a consulting firm, or is it a law, uh, office?
She's a consulting firm, she does H R.
Yeah.
That's pretty much all she does, is Van Borken and Associates. Um, she has presented at different I S A C meetings, her and, uh, I'm trying to think of the other firm that's other, a lot of people use. But if you, most people who don't have an in-house H R person will contract with one of the two companies.
Does that too, they have, they have a gentleman, they...
Yeah.
Well, don't you think if we hired this Wally with, to help the sheriff?
Yeah, I would.
And we are doing the codes according to the spraying in order to keep us legal?
Yep.
By the same token, we should do this in order to make sure that our handbooks are up to, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
We don't wanna do it...
Is there anything coming up in the State House that would change, anything that we have to redo this again next year?
Not as far as personnel policies, I'm still upset with them about passing that tax bill, that's gonna be something that's really gonna be a struggle to work with on the budget.
I have a feeling she's gonna sign that too.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
I asked Jamie at our I S A C meeting on Thursday if there was any chance of Governor vetoing, and he said, and he said both Sexton and Crane being voted for it. So, I sent him a letter, I sent him both letters saying, "Please don't push this thing through, you don't realize the, uh, economic impacts on the county for that yet," and it didn't make a difference, so...
Why the state would, would, would our...
I don't get the, I don't get the philosophy behind that bill.
I don't either.
What are negotiations with the union in, what, twenty, is it twenty or twenty-one?
I think it's twenty twenty.
I think it's next year. That's what I was...
Have a bearing on that.
That's what I was wondering, should we do it before or after we do this, or...
Well, in conjunction with it would be nice, because we have tried, Chris and I, for years to sit down and get all the contracts to mirror each other. So that we're not saying, "Okay, because you're secondary roads, you get this, and because you're a dispatcher, you get this."
Right.
But you don't get this because they get it. Um, I don't know why they don't mirror, but that's how they were set up, and there's little fluky things in, in wording in there.
And that's why I wondered, maybe we should hold off.
But she always says this is not the year you can negotiate those kind of things, you know, it has to be, I don't know when that year comes, but it would be nice to clean them up.
Yeah, maybe we need to put a little bit about that.
Yeah.
With our, if, if this is the proper time to be doing it, or if we should wait till negotiation, thanks.
Oh, you betcha, yeah.
You know?
If you have three different, um, unions and then you have the reg, you know, non-union, that'd be...
We've got four contracts plus that.
Yeah, that's hard to manage.
And they all have little, little things that differentiate them between, yeah. So, okay, we'll talk to Renee first.
Yeah, I was talking through that a little bit.
Okay.
And then if she recommends doing it, I guess you could just put it in the...
Put it on maybe...
The discussion at least.
Okay.
And her reasoning's why we should do it, I guess.
Sounds good.
Yeah, liability, you gotta be up on that stuff, or you're gonna get caught. See, that's, you are, you're just gonna get, you know, something you might not realize, and then somebody's like, "Hey, huh." Yeah. Then you're caught.
Okay, anything else?
I make motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, but during nine fifty-three.